All right, it is now 4:00 PM on October 15, 2024, and this is the City of Iowa City Work Session. And I am going to get us started with item number one, clarification of agenda items.
Mayor, I do have one item or two items that I'd like to mention. Staff has requested that we pull out 7A and 7C for separate consideration. 7A is the Bradford Drive Water Main replacement. This is, these are both set in public hearings. And 7C is the High Service Variable Frequency Drive Replacement Pump for the Water Division. We were overly optimistic that the plans and specs would all be ready for tonight, and they're not quite ready. So you'll see these reintroduced and another item, but we're going to ask you to pull them. And Public Works Director Ron Conneke will come up and ask you to vote those down so that we can reestablish at a future meeting.
Any other items for clarification of agenda items?
I guess I have a question on that specifically. Is there a reason why we would vote it down as opposed to defer? Or is there any distinction?
Well, the item sets a public hearing for the next meeting. So if we were to...
Gotcha. Yeah, sure.
Hearing no other items, we're going to move on to item number two, information packet, October 3. All right, am I waiting for you?
No.
Okay. October 10th, information packet. All right, so IP 5, we do have the Joint Entities Meeting on October 21st. And wondering if there are any topics for consideration that we want to submit?
Do we still have on the agenda for that meeting food insecurity contributions between the entities? I know we discussed that previously.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other topics for consideration?
I'm not sure if it would be something to pull together this quickly, but we had also asked for an update on the Early Childhood Coalition, about where their work is heading. I know that they continue to have conversations in meetings.
Okay. Excuse me, thank you. Are people okay if we reach out and find out if they can, are available?
Okay. And actually, could we invite community to attend to talk about the food insecurity issues, particularly the issues of the food bank?
Is this a carry, I wasn't able to make the last Joint Entities Meeting. Is that a carryover item?
No, that was a new item that we discussed at a previous meeting. I'm not sure exactly which date.
At a previous council meeting?
Yeah, and we decided that we would put it on the next Joint Entities.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think through the other food pantries in the area and whether they would need an invite as well.
Yeah, I think, absolutely.
Okay.
And I assume that would assume, that would include table to table?
Mm-hmm.
I think what I would do, just because I'm a little out of my element in that space, is just rely on community, encourage them to bring the partners to the tables. Everybody comfortable with that? That way I'm not leaving anybody out. Okay.
All right, hearing no other items?
I did want to, I'm sorry, I was just not quick enough. I wondered if anyone had any thoughts about the memo from the Assistant City Manager about deer hunting? We had had that discussion in the presentation, and I just wondered if anyone had further thoughts now that there's been time to kind of adjust. I thought it looked very good.
So we're, that's one of our items four. So we'll probably talk about that in a little bit.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah, okay. We're going to move on to USG, which is item number three, and University of Iowa Student Government Updates. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Matthews class ran a little bit late this night, this evening, so it'll be me giving announcements. I recently started writing some legislation to get $4,000 approved out of our budget to go towards our lease gap program because the university has partnered with the Graduate Hotel for a new program home since the House Hotel is closing. We've reached out, we've reached out to Operations Director Curtis Brenton to initiate USG's purchase of some city parking vouchers for finals week and dead week. We're really excited to continue working on this. And we're also currently working with our new governmental relations senators to get their initiatives going. And we look forward to hopefully getting them in contact with some of you guys and to educate them about things going on in the city and some things about zoning reform and stuff like that. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, we're on item number four, which is opportunities to expand bow hunting in or around Manville Heights. And it looks like Kirk is coming up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Kirk Lanin, Assistant City Manager. This is just a follow-up from our last meeting where we discussed, you know, different possibilities that we can look at to expand bow hunting within the Manville Heights neighborhood. Just in case, for the record, for background for others who might not be familiar, our bow hunting season is part of our deer management plan that includes five years of bow hunting, the potential for a sharpshoot after 2026 with the approval by the state, and then also non-lethal strategies as well. Our 2024 to 2025 bow hunt has already started, and it runs through January 10th. We do have a set of bow hunt rules as well that guides those. So that includes things like hunter registration, stand approval, separation distances. And we also have a city, or a process where the city can approve public property to be included in the hunt. So that's just kind of background for this. Within the Manville Heights neighborhood itself, it's tricky just because, as we discussed last time, there's not a lot of private property that is currently available for the hunt as, as the hunt rules currently stand. And so at our last meeting, I discussed three approaches, and you all came back and said we would like to pursue all three. So that is what I am here to talk about today. In terms of the different approaches that we recommended, first was to try to change the rules of the hunt to expand where hunting might be allowed. Second is to reach out to targeted property owners. And then finally is to look at city-owned properties within the Manville Heights neighborhood that might be appropriate for hunting, along with some potential stipulations to ensure the safety of the hunt. I did provide a memo dated October 10th, which is what I'm basically going to go through today, just to give you an overview, give you a chance to ask questions about what we're proposing. Within that packet, I do include a first attachment, which is the revised rules of the hunt that would go into effect. That would require a resolution, so I'd bring that back to you at your next meeting potentially, if that is something you want to move forward with. And then an attachment two, which shows the two public properties that we've discussed opening for the hunt. So with that, I'll just dive into the hunt rules and the few changes that we've talked about. I'll talk a little bit about the contacts that we propose making, and then the public property that we intend or that we recommend to allow hunting on. So in terms of hunting, as we discussed last time, there is a limit on the number of waivers allowed for separation distance. So when I say that, what I mean is hunting is not allowed within 150 feet of buildings, of property lines, of rights of way, of trails, of schools, and other similar properties. But there is an opportunity for private property owners or public property owners to waive the right to that 150-foot requirement for certain, certain characteristics. So that would include property lines, that would include distance from buildings, for example. But currently, that is capped at three waivers for any given location to be allowed to hunt. What we are proposing in the rule change that's included in attachment one would be to just remove that requirement. What that means in effect is that as long as all property owners within 150 feet consent to allow hunting within that 150 feet, 150-foot separation buffer, then hunting could be allowed within that property. Now, that's not to say that you can waive things like setbacks from right-of-way. That would not be allowed still, but it would allow in larger blocks where there's lots of property owners, would allow them to potentially allow hunting on the property if everyone consented. It does in no way require that property owners than 150 feet consent to that. In addition to that, there are also some slight modifications to the language related to hunting near trails and near parks. That is specifically to allow hunting in the locations that I propose as kind of that third tranche of options to try and encourage additional hunting within the Manville Heights neighborhood. So like I said, the hunt rules have been adopted by resolution in the past, and so we would want to bring that before you again as a resolution to approve, should you, should you choose to approve it or to consider it at your next meeting. The next tranche of outreach that we discussed would be specifically mailing property owners that might be eligible to allow hunting at their properties. What we'd propose is basically waiting until any new rules are finalized because that will determine what properties might be eligible for hunting. We would then poll the addresses of those that might have a location on their property and just mail out a letter saying, hey, we'd love you to participate, or you might be eligible to participate in our hunt. We're encouraging it as part of our deer management strategies. If you're interested, contact the city, these are the rules, et cetera. That would include outreach to the University of Iowa as well. But again, we wouldn't pursue that until we had those updated rules because we want to make sure that the property owners that we contact are those locations that might be eligible for the hunt. And then finally, you had asked about adding more city-owned properties, specifically within Manville Heights. Staff does, I'm going to open up the memo just to go to the map because it's easier that way. Included as attachment two within the packet. The two locations that staff had tentatively identified previously was property near the Ned Ashton House, and then also property near City Park, including City Park itself. So staff proposes allowing hunting within those locations, as shown in this attachment two, subject to a couple additional limitations that we don't have on other city-owned properties. First would be that hunting times and locations would be restricted to avoid periods of heavy use and areas with programmed activities. Those would be approved by the Director of Parks and Recreation to ensure that we aren't disturbing other users of the property. And I did also include a note that, that City Park is already closed from dusk to dawn. It might extend a little beyond that timeframe with the approval of Parks and Recreation Director, but those would be the locations that we're looking at. So it's a relatively large area that could be eligible. There might be other locations that might be eligible if there are adjacent property owners that are also interested in waiving requirements. We would also consider this to be authority to waive requirements if there's property owners within 150 feet of these two properties as well. That would be private property that might be interested. Second is that if hunting is to occur within 150 feet of a trail, then that trail would be closed and signage placed at all entrances to the trail to prevent potential conflicts. You'll notice that obviously there's trails through City Park, there's trails through the area near Ned Ashton House. While we don't have hunt locations identified yet, it is likely that some of those trails are going to be within 150 feet, in which case we would need to close those trails for the duration that we would allow hunting. Third would be that we would reach out to staff and organizations that are within the area. That would include city staff, park staff, public works staff, in addition to any other users of the property that are regularly programmed. For example, there are users of the ball fields, et cetera, that we would want to make sure are aware that hunting might be occurring near their, near their programmed activities. And then finally, would be that we would limit bow hunting first to city employees. In the event that there is insufficient interest by city employees, then we would open it to those with a proven track record with Iowa City's hunt as it currently stands. So we'd be looking at approved hunters who have had at least one year of experience in the Iowa City hunt. The goal would really be to make sure that these are folks that we can trust within these areas. And as City Manager Fruen mentioned last time, especially with city employees, there is that enhanced sense of responsibility that comes with being a city employee, operating on city property. And so it is something that you do see in other hunts throughout the state. So I did also want to note that with regards to this final item that is allowing hunting on public property, unlike the rules change which would require a subsequent resolution based on the methodology that council has approved to approve new city-owned property for hunting, this meets that obligation to make sure that the public is aware that it's there. You are welcome to say, we don't want hunting in these locations, if that is the case. But if you're okay with hunting in those locations, then this would satisfy that requirement, and we would begin to proceed with seeing if there are eligible hunters, specifically city employees that would be interested in these public properties. So we do believe that with these three measures, we could expand hunting within the Manville Heights neighborhood specifically. It is an area that has lots of deer, lots of property damage from deer, and we hear frequently from residents of the area. So we know that it's of high interest to them. But we believe with these restrictions, with these additional restrictions to public property specifically, that we can ensure that the hunt remains safe, but that we do try to help manage our deer population a little better in this challenging area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and we'll go from there.
So I got a couple things. How many people outside of city employees are we talking about potentially being eligible to participate? Who would have that track record of participation in city programs in the past?
That's a great question. I believe we had, I want to say we had 16 eligible hunters last year. I know some of those hunters have already found locations. A lot of them that have been involved in the hunt have a location that they've worked in the past and that they know works for them. But 16 is the maximum number that it could presumably be if city employees weren't interested.
Okay. Other than that, I think this is great. Yeah.
We've been focused on Manville Heights because of the City Park and Ned Ashton House, but the removal of three waivers would be for the entire city, right?
That is correct.
And I am curious, are there any, any special considerations for areas where it's multifamily housing as opposed to single-family housing?
So...
Or is that, has that happened yet? Or is that something to be, I just feel like when it's your home and your neighbor's homes, it's a very different kind of communication requirement than an apartment building?
That's a great question. Currently, it's structured so that it's property owners that are interested in participating. In the case of multifamily, you might have a situation where it's a condo and you have multiple property owners that own the property, and all of them would have to consent. In some cases, you might have a single property owner that might be able to allow it. And that would be under the current rules of the hunt, that would be permitted.
And they, if you have like, let's say, an apartment building, do they have to tell the tenants that they're allowing this hunt? Is that a requirement?
There is no requirement within the current rules.
Okay. No offense. It seems to me like if there is one that involves a multifamily housing, that it would be a requirement. We just tell them, you need to notify?
Sure.
Yeah.
It's a great point.
I agree with that.
I think if we add that, we could just say any rental property because I think it could be even a single-family home with a landlord that might not communicate otherwise, but put it on the property owner to notify.
And specifically to inform the tenant, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
At a minimum, of course.
Kirk, I had one just kind of nitpicky question on the additional rules on page six in the red line rules. The fourth bullet still has the, will not be approved if more than three waivers are required, I think.
On page six?
On, it's numbered page six.
Yep.
Yeah, the fourth bullet in the additional rules.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
So doing City Park, of course, that's a large area. I imagine there'll be some concern potentially at some point, or we'll hear something from a community member. But I guess I wanted to just mention that the City of Urbandale has been doing controlled bow hunting for 24 years, and they've had no safety incident concerns. And so I think it would be, especially with how we're planning to have city staff, we're being very careful about who we want to be on public property. Doing these, I feel very comfortable moving forth with the four recommendations.
And I would also like to add that, of course, we as the city would want to ensure that this, where the stands are located are going to have the least disruption.
Sure.
So.
Any other...
On top of the concession stand, maybe?
We might pass on that one.
Do you need anything else from council at this point?
What I'm hearing is I'll have a resolution for you at your next meeting. After that, we'll send out letters, and otherwise, we'll start to see if there are any city staff that are interested in hunting these properties. So I appreciate it, appreciate the guidance. And if you have any more questions, you know where to find me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. That was quick. All right, we're going to move on to, well, we're going to move on to the next discussion item, which is item number five, which is on affordable housing financing. So welcome, Tracy.
Need to open it up? All right, well, thank you, Mayor Teague. As the mayor noted, I'm Tracy Heishu, the Director of Neighborhood and Development Services. Thank you for the opportunity to present today about the city's available resources for housing in our current efforts to address affordable housing in our community. I have worked for the city for over two decades now in community development housing, and I'm truly appreciative of the efforts that the city council has went to support affordable housing as demonstrated in your fiscal year 16 annual action, or Housing Action Plan in your fiscal year 22 update. Affordable, oh, sorry. Sorry. Our past efforts have been recognized through the Ward of HUD's Competitive Pro-Housing Grant. Since the funding ward, we have been asked to present at numerous state and national associations, their legislative committees, our funders, and Invest Health. Since, what this tells us is that I believe that all communities are struggling with affordable housing to help their communities and their residents. The Census Bureau notes that over half of the nation's renters are cost burden, which means they pay more than 30% of their income on housing. The Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies estimates the nation's shortage of affordable housing at 1.5 to 5.5 million, depending on who calculates it and what methodology they use. So what we're going to do today is we're going to look at what we're, what funds we have available, our current efforts and our plans over the next three to five years to, to address longstanding regulatory barriers that restrict housing development, and how we increase affordable housing locally to benefit our low-income and our most vulnerable residents. So what we did is we broke up our funding sources into four main categories. We both, we have annual allocations and entitlements. Those are regular funds that are coming in through HUD and through our general fund that we budget every year and that we rely on. We have our special allocations. Those are those one-time funding opportunities that are time-limited, and we have expenditure deadlines that we must meet. We have project-generated revenue from revenues and programs that you have instituted that are now, the projects are developed, and we have revenue coming in. And we have our reserves, and most of those reserves are from our public housing programs, but we wanted to indicate them because there is some flexibility within city-owned affordable housing and the public housing program. But this loss is, this list is not exhaustive. We support and administer housing projects that may not be reflected here through prior-year carryover projects that we administer, like such as Down Payment Assistance Program, our larger housing and public facility projects take over a year to finish, such as like the new DVIP shelter. We have the South District Affordable Home Ownership Program that you guys are very familiar with. We continue to renovate, and we provide property management and maintenance for the ones that are currently occupied. And the same thing with the railroad homes we purchased and we're renovating currently. We're going to focus on the HUD programs first under our annual allocations entitlements. HUD has been a phenomenal partner in our efforts to address affordable housing in our community. Up until about 2017, they are our primary funding source in support of affordable housing, with the exception of the floods of 2008. After that, we, we had a lot of funds for buyouts and for the single-family new construction program. But our day-to-day primary funding source was our regular annual CDBG and home entitlements and the funds that we receive through the Housing Authority. CDBG and home typically receive, we receive about $1 million a year. In this slide, you see the fiscal year '25 amount that we had available is 1.5 million. That includes not only our entitlement, but includes our program income and return funds. We have been a home community, or CDBG community since the program's inception 50 years ago. We were asked by HUD to present at the, for the 50th CDBG celebration in conjunction with Nashville, New York City, and Las Vegas. And the reason why they chose Iowa City is because we've been a reliable, steadfast partner in administering federal funds and your commitment to affordable housing in our local initiatives. We've received a lot of feedback from our sister entitlement cities, and many... Yeah, hold on, going too fast. Many were impressed by just the city's local commitment to use general fund for local affordable housing initiatives. Hold on, I'm still way ahead. As you know, home and CDBG, you can fund various things through those programs. Home, you have to, you have to only fund housing-related activities. CDBG, you can fund quite a range. So we, in fiscal year '25, we funded the Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County Facility Improvements at Pheasant Ridge. We funded the Grantwood Fair Meadow Sidewalk Connection that will be this next construction season, microprize assistance for home-based child cares, public services, and owner-occupied housing rehab. And then I wanted to include the two photos of DVIP. That's the new shelter. It went from a 70, 40-bed to 70-beds, and incorporated a lot of design improvements from the previous shelter. And I know they're proud that they now offer five kennels. So a huge barrier for people leaving a domestic abuse situation, what happens to the family pet. So through charitable pet contributions, or pet charities and donors, they were able to put the five kennels in there, so it's no longer a barrier. I wanted to talk about the historical funding of CDBG and home. For the last decade, and CDBG funding has been stable, but for the home program, we have seen major cuts. The fiscal year '25, we, it was a cut of about 25%. Went from 515,000 down to 384,000, or 384. As funding reduced, we get less money to administer the programs. Federal programs are typically regulatory complex, especially for housing programs. Having trained staff with exposure and experience of federal housing programs allows us the ability to apply and receive additional funding through a variety of state and federal programs, increasing our ability to expand of subsidized affordable housing in our community. The second major source of HUD funding is what we receive through the Housing Authority for our Housing Choice Voucher Program and our public housing program. So we administer close to 1,600 vouchers in Johnson County, Iowa County, and parts of Washington County. And I wanted to highlight that since we have 309 specialty vouchers, we have received 202 since 2019. And most of these vouchers are aimed at assisting those with highest barriers in securing and maintaining housing. There's increased time and complexity to these vouchers. At tonight's council meeting, you'll be reviewing an agenda item for an additional housing program assistant position. Part of that position will be address our project-based vouchers, quality control of the Housing Choice Voucher Program to meet all our federal requirements, assist in the compliance and regulatory tracking of the public housing tenants, especially as we position ourselves into a Housing Choice Voucher platform. Aid agencies is included in this housing presentation as it is a key funder to our local nonprofit organizations who work primarily with low-income households to reduce household monthly expenses and address critical needs experienced by families throughout a variety of ways. The city has increased funds allocated substantially to aid agencies since fiscal year '16. You see 103% increase. While on average, 26% of the funds go to housing-related agencies that you see listed on the screen, 74% awarded to agencies like Community Crisis Center, Food Bank, Free Med, UAY, Table to Table, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Pathways, ARC, Dream Center, Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County, Free Lunch, and Center for Worker Justice. The last is after our HUD funds, we have our commitment to city general funds. Council has funded the GRIP program for the last 20 years. It provides rehabilitation loans for homeowners that don't qualify for our federal programs, either they're income-eligible or their eligible use is not allowed under the federal programs, such as finishing your basement or providing an addition. Income can go up to 110% in median income. All loans are repaid to the city with a maximum turn of 20 years. And then the Affordable Housing Fund. You guys have dedicated reliable funding since fiscal year '16, since that action plan was, was approved. So we've invested 8.6 million through the Affordable Housing Fund every year. I want to bring attention to our distribution of funds. Almost 70... Almost 70% goes to the Housing Trust Fund, either the general allocation or for the low-income housing tax credit set-aside. This fund, the Housing Trust Fund, combines state, county, city, and loan repayments to fund affordable housing in Johnson County. In their upcoming fall funding round, they have over 1.7 million available. This is quite substantial compared to our fiscal year '25 home allocation of only 384,000, which kicks in all the federal requirements as well. And then I did mention, as we carry over funds, we don't use those funds in the Affordable Housing Fund, such as from healthy homes and emergent funds, the balance gets transferred in the Opportunity Fund and becomes available for other affordable housing projects. So our prior year carryover is about 265,000. So this is a summary of all our annual allocations entitlements. Once again, HUD has been a great partner, contributing over 13 million to our total 15 million each year. It is important that we maintain regulatory compliance with our largest funding partner. The next category is special allocations. You guys are familiar with the American Rescue Plan Act, our ARPA funds. That has the closest earliest deadline of 2026. We've dedicated 2.85 million out of our 18.3 towards housing. You'll see a picture of the new acquisition. We did three, three-bedroom condos off of Herbert Hoover. We have the temporary CO, we have the rental permit, and now the Housing Authority will begin with the marketing and to lease up those units, and they're income-restricted, rent-restricted units. At the end of this week, we'll acquire the lots on North Summit Street to construct up to 36 units, and bear in mind, doesn't mean we construct up to 36 units. We'll evaluate the lot, we'll look at what can be developed, we'll think of the compatibility with the neighborhood and have different options that we may pursue. So that's upcoming, that's more information to come. And we dedicated over 1.1 million to Shelter House for their stability pilot project that is underway right now. And no, this wasn't a set-aside. We have dedicated money for housing-related assistance through other ARPA set-asides, and I listed those, those that directly impacted household, or housing. So much like aid agencies, ARPA dollars have indirectly supported housing, provided over a million in operational support to various nonprofits, such as Community Crisis Service and Food Bank, Center for Worker Justice, Dream City, Iowa City Compassion, Neighborhood Centers, Open Heartland, and United Action for Youth. We have funded childcare programs through 4Cs and our partnership with the county and Community Foundation for Wage Enhancements for childcare workers, and we've also provided approximately 1.2 million in direct payments to low-income households with the county. Then HUD announced the availability of a new home ARP category. Few organizations were able to apply for these funds because of their program's preference criteria and who could be assisted. In general, the applicant had to serve those experiencing homelessness, at risk of homelessness, homelessness, or those fleeing domestic abuse. These funds are also subject to federal requirements and non-discrimination, equal opportunity requirements. So the city got a direct award from HUD for 1.7 million, and those funds have been allocated to DVIP, Shelter House, and Iowa Legal Aid. And then in a separate funding round with the state, the state opened up a funding round for home ARP. DVIP applied, and they are one of two organizations to get funded. They are fully funded. They're in partnership with DVIP. So DVIP will buy the lot that we purchased on Kenneth Drive for affordable housing with prior land banking or opportunity funds, and the IFO award allows DVIP to develop with a local match, up to six-town homes, and provide supportive and operating funds for the next, I think, five or six years. The pro-housing funds has been a pivotal grant, which will have several long-term implications to help us meet our ability to increase our housing supply, assisting those needing affordable housing throughout our community. We'll come back to this grant at the end of the, the presentation. And then the last special, special allocation award was a Community Development Block Grant CV Award. This was directly from the state. It went to Shelter House to help with their, the design and improvements at their current shelter, and as all of us are at capacity or we're nearing capacity for federal and state funds, the state contracted with us to administer the funding for that award. So this just highlights all the special allocations, and we highlight the date, deadline that we're working against. All these projects have to be spent out by this deadline. And I wanted to note that all of these are HUD programs. The source of funding is all HUD, except for ARPA, which was a grant through the Treasury Department. The next category was project-generated revenue, and these are basically policies and procedures that we set in the past that are now generating income. One is riverfront crossings at Feenloo. We've taken payments of over 5.8 million. With interest, we now have 6.2 million. It has to be used just in riverfront crossings. We also did a residential TIF off of Foster Road. It's in year three of 10, a 10-year TIF, so it's generated 393,000 to date. And then we had the Tailwinds TIF. It was the project up in the Pet Mall. They paid us 1.8 million. We purchased eight duplexes with the south, for the South District program. That available remaining balance, we use, we use to rehab the units that we have. So 300,000 plus will fund the renovation of our next three duplex for a total of six So riverfront project-generated revenue is almost $7 million, and all of it is available for a future affordable housing project, except for the Tailwinds TIF balance. Public housing, well, we're talking about reserves, and public housing has most of the reserves. We have 1.3 million available for affordable, income-and-rent restricted housing projects. Now, this is for the whole jurisdiction, so those funds can be used anywhere in Johnson, Iowa, and parts of Washington County. They can only be used for acquisition and rehab of city-owned affordable housing. And then we have our capital reserves, which are key. We have 2.8 million. They have to be for capital improvements or acquisition of new public housing units in the program. So they're also, if you remember the presentation by Naomi, our intern with Bloomberg Harvard Leadership Initiative, we're losing money in our public housing program every year, and those capital reserves are paying for that, and it's not sustainable. So that is why we're having a consultant take us through that repositioning to a Housing Choice Voucher Platform to make it sustainable, because we can't keep sustaining those losses long-term. And then the rest, I already talked about the Opportunity Fund. That's our prior year balance, not our current fiscal year '25 allocation, but our prior available balance for Opportunity Funds. So to summarize, our regular allocations provide us with $15 million annually. However, due to special allocations, project revenue, accumulated reserves, disposition proceeds, we are administering an additional 23 million. We will have to be strategic and utilize staff as effectively as possible. We have hired one full-time grant specialist since we receive our ARPA funds, but there is $38 million available right now. These funds, we will, we will go by affordable housing goals. We want to be efficient and effective in what we do. We want to encourage, increase the supply of housing, all housing for all levels and for all types of households and their various stages of life, and we will work on enabling and expanding the construction of affordable subsidized housing by creating and developing arm within the Housing Authority. New construction is never affordable without great subsidy. So if we're going to move down this path, then we have to have multiple layers of financing to, to achieve that. I wanted to highlight our recent successes. I have a few photos. One is the Ronald Street House, the other is the DVIP, the new bedrooms. What was interesting about DVIP is the old shelter. They plan on converting to permanent supportive housing on the second level for individuals transitioning out of shelter, and the main level to be used for administrative offices and support services. And then what was a huge lift, what we got done was approved housing text amendments to the zoning code that you approved back in November 2023. They allowed us to expand the use of duplexes, multifamily options, and ADUs in additional residential zones with less requirements. It removes some design requirements for multifamily buildings that developer previously requested because they were expensive without adding a lot to the development, and includes creased density and parking reductions for income-qualified affordable housing. Next steps, we have contracted with the Mulligan Associates out of Pennsylvania. They're developing our five-year consolidated plan, which we also call City Steps. This guides our federal funding to assist low-income residents based on prioritized needs. There also, we contracted with them to do the regional housing market analysis. We'll use that data to form both our comprehensive plan and consolidated plans. And as we have talked about earlier, we are going through the process of issuing an RFP, which hopefully will be out next month, to reposition our public housing program and to develop the capacity with internally to develop affordable housing. Hopefully that, that's released in November. And we'll continue to make strategic investments in housing and pursue funding opportunities in line with the city's strategic plan. One of those is a pro-housing grant. It was due today to HUD, and one of the main focus is to complete a comprehensive update of the zoning code. The zoning code update is extremely important, as we need to focus on three most, the three most important levers that we can to change different development options in residential zones. When at the Invest Health meeting, the collaboration grant back in Missoula, I thought it was funny because they called these layers the holy trinity of zoning. Basically, you look at density, defines how many homes and type of homes that can be on a lot, given its size. You look at setbacks, tells us how far away from property lines we must place the home building. There are usually different distances for front, rear, and side setbacks, and also various variations for corner lots in unique situations. And lastly, parking. It tells us how many parking spaces we must accommodate on the building lot to create a dwelling unit. So we'll, we'll need to update these levers to promote a diversity of residential development. The pro-housing, the pro-housing is very comprehensive. We will, hopefully in the next year or two, start housing counseling services. We will get trained. Our housing council services will be focused on our Housing Authority tenants with hopes to provide community workshops on budgeting, maintaining housing, credit repair, and other related topics throughout our jurisdiction. We'll update the comprehensive plan, that land use plan, that consultant agreement. It will be to you probably in November. Within that, we hope to increase land zone for multifamily residential development initiative parking reform, and we'll start developing affordable housing through that pilot development project, and we are looking for sites as we speak. And I, I want to put a cautionary note, because you guys get a lot of pressure, like, we have this money, why aren't we spending it right now? Developing affordable housing is complex. It takes a lot of significant time and resources. There's numerous stages. So I highlighted the stages here that all developers go through, but the ones in yellow, we have increased time in the public sector in affordable housing to provide. So the feasibility study, private developers go through environmental reviews just like us. However, we have to incorporate items such as environmental justice, distance to schools, public transport, and a variety of other items to complete a satisfactory environmental review for HUD. Our goal, wait, and the next is community engagement. We go through a lot more community engagement to find out what's compatible with the neighborhood design options. We have to secure multiple financing, because with affordable housing, I told you, new construction is never affordable without significant subsidy. So that means you're applying, you're attaching different layers of financing, like it could be federal, state, local, private financing, and you're applying, you're getting awarded those before you can even start. And the last one regarding whatever funding source you secure, you have to ensure regulatory compliance and your mandatory reporting throughout. So there are different things in the public sector that private sector, they don't have. So it will take time. So while looking at current statistics on housing shortages and affordability issues, I came across this article. I thought from recent times to discuss the nation's current housing shortage and affordability issues, but it was referring to the housing crisis immediately following World War II. With millions of military personnel coming home, lack of housing production throughout the Great Depression, and construction and manufacturing diverted from, to the war effort, and a dramatically expanding population, there was a severe lack of housing throughout the nation. Federal policies were changed, mortgage reform was made, incentives expanded. The nation collectively addressed the problem. We are at another time with a severe housing shortage and increasing affordability problems made worse by the pandemic. We will continue to work with our federal, state, and local partners to address the issues. We have the funds available to make significant improvements in long-term affordable housing and reduce longstanding regulatory barriers through zoning reform. We need to either hire or contract for the expertise needed to have an effective real estate development wing, hopefully housed in the Housing Authority. We are working to develop the staff capacity to administer the funds we have now under the constraints of each award. We need to make strategic, well, we have to be strategic with the funds we have and the opportunities we pursue. Our uncommitted fund, funds, sounds like a lot of funds, but 13 million builds about 42 to 52 homes, depending on the type of housing, and without leveraging any other sources of funds. Our goal with these funds, especially the pro-housing grant, is long-term, to position ourselves so that we can encourage private development to increase our supply of housing, all types of housing, for all income levels and stages of life, to build our long-term capacity to support and our nonprofit affordable housing partners, as well as build our own capacity to develop and administer affordable subsidized housing effectively and sustainably. So once again, thank you for the opportunity to present today about the funds that we have for affordable housing and our current efforts, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, first, I want to say thanks for your 20-plus years of serving at the city. It is evident in your presentation today. Always good information from you. I'll just open it up for questions and comments at this point, and I'll reserve mine for a little later.
May I ask you about the riverfront crossing reservation that we have, I think 7 million or something like that?
Um, 6.8.
6.8. And is this going to be like, is this attached to, we have to do that in riverfront crossing? Or we can be like, do like anywhere else?
No, due to state law, we have to use it just in the area it was generated, so we have to use that money in the riverfront crossings district.
Okay.
If we wanted to use that money elsewhere, what would be the process of, is there any opportunity?
There is no.
I mean, I'll have Eric answer that, but I don't think there is.
No.
All right. Because we hear that a lot, you know?
We could expand riverfront crossings, though, couldn't we? That would be one way to change it.
Well, I guess I would have to look to see if it would be applied retrospectively or prospectively. That is, at the time, we collected this money that we're discussing today, the shape and size was this, and if we then expand it to the whole city, let's say, that would seem to undercut the purpose of that.
I don't think anyone would want a whole city, but...
Well, I'm, I'm using an extreme example to illustrate my point.
Sure.
I would need to research that as to whether we could expand it and, and use it in the fashion you're describing, but I'd be happy to look into that if there's council interest.
But any plan right now? Jeff?
Yeah, I'd say for the last two or three years, we've been keeping our eyes open for available property. We've had some conversations with the council about available properties. Riverfront crossings is, you know, it, it's seen a lot of redevelopment, which is great because it's generated the 6.3 fund balance, but there's also extremely high land prices and extremely high demand. So we're trying to be strategic in, in what properties we pursue, but we pursued some and lost out to, to better offers, and at least right now, last six, nine months, there hasn't been a whole lot of property available that would meet our criteria for developing affordable housing. So we're just continuing to keep our eyes open for available land that may work, and it, I shouldn't, I shouldn't limit it to just land. It could be existing residential units that we just purchase and, and do more of a rehab or, or purchase of existing. We are also looking at those options.
Can you talk a little bit more about that holy trinity?
Well, it's interesting, because in Missoula, they have a pro-housing, not related to the HUD grant, but they have a group of architects, building community, neighborhood residents, because their average house prices have gone over 500,000, and their kids can't afford to live in Missoula. So they have a group out there educating residents about what density, parking, and setbacks mean, and taking them through like older development, explaining like why you couldn't, based on the zoning code, develop that today. And so I think that's effective. So those are the three levers that our zoning code will need to trigger in order to get that variety of housing that we're, they're after in each of our residential neighborhoods.
Am I understanding correctly, Tracy, that you, that is part of the larger overhaul of the zoning code that we've been talking about?
Yeah. First, we're doing our comprehensive plan, which is basically our land use plan. So hopefully that land use plan calls for more multifamily, higher-density residential. And then after you have that, then we're going to have to update our zoning code, because it's the mechanism which enforces our land use plan. So once we get one done, we're moving to the other.
And I know we've had to do some sort of spot amendments to the zoning code to implement different pieces of this and some of the ways that you discussed this evening. I'm just, I feel like we need some kind of shorthand reminder, you know, when the council's up here looking at a particular proposal or development, and it's like, we don't have the comp plan amendments yet, or we don't have the zoning code amendment yet, but there's something that's in front of us that actually would meet, you know, like where we think we're headed, since we know it's a number of years.
Is that like a timeline? You're looking for a timeline?
Well, I'm just wondering, you know, when staff gives a recommendation relating to a rezoning in particular, like if there's a way to elevate, we believe this is where we're headed in terms of our affordable housing goals, even though we know this is a very complex, you know, inter, sort of interdependent process. I think just kind of surfacing those, hey, council, this really will align with this, even though I'm just thinking of cases where it may not require a zoning code amendment, but we might want to do something that we know is headed down that path. We just haven't hit all those regulatory landmarks yet? If that makes sense?
I could highlight that. We'll be coming back to you. South, Navigate is submitting their rezoning for the Form Based Code in the South District. So there's a bunch of text amendments that we're going to have to do in order to, for that development to proceed. So we could highlight about how this, what is needed to change in our regular code in order, but when we do those text amendments to the Form Based Code, those will be for every development from there on out. Is that what you mean?
I think that would be helpful. I mean, I think I was, I was thinking even more generally, which is why I keep, I keep sort of looking at Jeff on the, you know, overarching question rather than maybe the more technical questions that, that your department provides, but, you know, something to just kind of make sure that we're reminded. I always go back, the, the example that's always in my head is the annexation that we voted down four years ago or whatever in the Carson Farms area, because I felt like we didn't have a really solid understanding of that element of the need for housing of all types and all stages of life and all places and that, so.
I think what I hear you saying is we have been in positions before where the current codes, whether it's, is not in alignment with what codes, whether it's, is not in alignment with what our future aspirations are. I think that's what I hear, is that we are often faced with something that is ancient, but the proposal before us has some of that foresight. But, you know, oftentimes we're held to, you know, the red ink that's already been dry. And so I think that's where Councilor Burgess, if I understand correctly, if you could remind us sometimes of, yeah, it's not in the code now, but this is really where we're trying to get to. I think that's what I hear, because there is a lot of work to be done on so many fronts. Did I understand your position correctly?
Yeah, and I think staff does a really good job, and I know they have those conversations with developers long before it gets to us, right? If we're probably going to be heading this way, or you should, you know, be looking at this. I just think elevating the affordable housing elements, just to kind of tie that bow for us, for me personally, would be really helpful.
Yeah.
I actually do have one more question. It was one of the later slides, and you were talking about, it was via the Pro Housing award that we've gotten. And you were talking about, I'm putting it as future state, but yeah, begin providing housing counseling services. That's fascinating. I mean, so it sounds like honestly that the city is taking on more of a wraparound kind of approach to housing by way of this award. Is that accurate?
So part of the, what we applied for and we got funded for was 200,000 to initiate a certified housing counseling program. And the focus will be on our 1,600 voucher holders and our public housing tenants. And basically, it will be somebody working with them to work on budgeting, how to maintain housing. But also, we hope to get to the point where we can do workshops in the community that talk about credit repair, those related subjects. But we have to have a certified HUD counselor with experience. We have to hire that person, and then we can train internal staff as well.
Train the trainers.
But we have to have someone with experience based on HUD regulations. So that'll be hiring, we just have to figure out where we're going to put them.
Is that something, that's true. Is that something that you are hoping will become a sustainable, like a permanent feature of your department?
Yeah, we're hoping we can use our reserves to continue funding that. And then there's programs within HUD too, if you have that.
That you can apply for.
So we're hoping, yes.
Okay. Thank you. This would be amazing.
So you talked about 13 million dollars remaining.
Uncommitted?
Yes, I think that was through HUD.
I wasn't sure where the number was coming from, because I know we have 6.8 in riverfront crossing and some more funds, but maybe that's not really a...
Yeah, the 13.4 million consists of the Pro Housing Grant for the development project. It includes the, all the riverfront crossings and...
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, and then the Public Housing Reserves and Opportunity Fund. That, you come up with 13 million when you add all those.
Got it. All right.
But they all have restrictions. So it's not like, we can just pick one project and use it all in there.
Sure, sure.
And I didn't go through all the CDB rules. I didn't say 24 CFR, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
But those apply.
Yep, yep, okay. No, I just need a clarification on that. And then you mentioned the real estate wing potential that could be under the Housing Authority. I just heard Counselor Alter mention, like, looking at all the things of housing, where we're going to have the counseling, there's going to be some more things that we're doing. Are there other significant things that you've seen in other cities where it's been housed in the city that we're now talking about doing, which I'm sure some of this stuff that you're mentioning?
Yep. Sorry, go ahead.
But if you can maybe highlight some of those things, as well as, is there something that we're still not on our radar as far as like, this is what we're going to be doing?
We have different experience. I mean, we have the zoning, we have the inspection. There's different part of a real estate wing that we lack expertise or experience, and that's the real estate portion, such as a Realtor, the development. We don't typically develop our own housing, like new construction. We've looked at, we've met with other housing authorities. Somehow, we're hiring that consultant to take us through to develop our own internal capacity, what the legal structure looks like, what the funding sources looks like, what our staffing, because you have to ramp up staffing if you're going to increase the number of units that are under our management and that we're, that we have. So that consultant hopefully takes us through that. We've met with other housing authorities that they decided to remove themselves from the city, or maybe the city points the Housing Authority Board of Directors. And so you have some in order to create like a separate liability line between the Housing Authority and the city. Then there's others that the Housing Authority remains in the city, and they have their own development wing, and they contract out for developers that do li-tech projects. There's a lot of different options that we've seen throughout the, throughout other cities. We just need to find what works best for us. And so that's what we hope that consultant does. And the consultants that we see that take you through the repositioning of public housing are also, because they do RAD conversions and stuff, they're also very familiar with li-tech development and just real estate development. So we're hoping finding one of those firms that takes us through both of the repositioning of the public housing and then developing our capacity and what that looks like, I don't know, so.
That answer is very encouraging, and it actually answered the question of, you know, are there opportunities that could still be out there that we might want to consider? And you just answered, yes, we'll have someone that has worked with various communities, and there could be something that might be recommended that might work for us.
Yeah.
And enhance that, you know, the experience that people have in our city.
We got bad news from HUD. The, when Naomi presented, we decided we want to go through a streamlined conversion process, and then we find out HUD is no longer supporting that. So now we need that consultant to come back. Okay, option number two, what does that look like? And so it takes through those financial models and our processes.
Sure.
It'll be coming back to you.
Sure.
We know we have to go through some repositioning, but what the final solution is, we don't know that yet.
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of thoughts to that. When it comes to, you know, the right strategy for affordable housing, it tends to be all of the above, right? It's, we need the private sector building at all levels. We need nonprofits engaged in expanding their services and their housing. And as Tracy just outlined, the city's got to get a little bit more aggressive with our public housing. So you have to do, do all of these things. If I look at kind of this presentation and where we're going, one of the things that I question whether we're working enough in, or the space that we're working enough in is the rehabilitation, the investment in our existing stock. Tracy mentioned a couple of times during the presentation that new construction is very expensive, whether we're buying it like the townhomes that we just bought, whether we're building it, like the Pro Housing Pilot Project. Those are very expensive, and the cost per unit are difficult. They're also just, as Tracy said, very complex, right? They take a lot of time. So one of the, you know, the things that we don't get a lot of credit for, and frankly, the funds maybe tilted a little unequally, are just the rehab, keeping people in their homes at an affordable rate, and ensuring those homes remain affordable for the next generation of renters, of homeowners. So, you know, we want to do everything. We have limited resources, but I would just kind of plant that seed. And I think the riverfront crossings discussion that Mayor Pro Tem brought up before is a good highlight. $6 million after land acquisition doesn't get you much in riverfront crossings. But could we buy existing units? Could we help rehabilitate and ensure income-protected units going forward in an area that's quickly kind of gentrifying? Yeah, we probably could, and we may be able to hit more units. Those are, those are the types of conversations that we have here at City Hall, and I wanted to just share that perspective with you.
Appreciate you talking about the three potential developers of housing that all need to do their work, for-profits and not-for-profits. What are we doing to incentivize? I know the code, the planning, excuse me, the comprehensive plan revisions and potential zoning changes will be something that would hopefully entice private developers to develop smaller, more affordable units. In the interim, is there other things that we can do to encourage the private sector to develop the kinds of housing that we know we need? Because I think we sort of know the sizes of homes that we need and the price points, it's just that those are the least desirable for builders to build. Is there anything we can or are doing?
I know a barrier for when I talk to developers is our annexation policy. It's great intent, but when they look at it, and with no financial incentives attached to it, they are hesitant when they can build in other communities. So something like a residential TIF agreement that we can support, so it's a win-win situation for the builder, and affordable housing is something we could look at.
Yeah, I was going to say, residential TIF is a tool that we've, we first started to bring up in 2016 with our action plan. What that allows is, allows for TIF to pay for some of the infrastructure costs that supports residential development, and can often times make development feasible when it otherwise would not. And then it can spin off additional money for affordable housing. So Tracy had briefly mentioned the Foster Road TIF that we did. That's where the vintage senior living is. That was a case in which vintage couldn't go there unless Foster Road was extended through. It would be rare for a developer to have to pay for an entire section of main arterial like Foster Road. So we had a TIF agreement with them where they built the road, and for 10 years, we'll be rebating them the cost of that road. And then 50% of that TIF is also just accumulating that we can invest in the, in the community. So when we think about some of our larger residential development areas in the future, Carson, someone brought up the Carson property out on the west side. There's going to be some major roadway networks, major stormwater infrastructure that needs to be developed out there. I think residential TIF is something that we'll need to consider, that can bring down the cost of development for the private sector, but also help us generate some affordable housing dollars that we can reinvest either in that neighborhood or outside of the neighborhood. I think that's about the one tool that we could probably use a little bit more. You have to, you have to be careful in how you use that, because as you're building rooftops, the demand for public services, both from the city and the school district, go up. So the TIF withholds those tax dollars for the provision of those services to repay the infrastructure. So it's a balancing act. It worked really well with Foster Road when you're just building one senior housing building, but when it gets time to Carson, we'll have to have some, some more thought and analysis on the types of services and funding those services we'll need versus the infrastructure cost.
Yeah, I also want to add that if we're really seeking to improve land use and enables much-needed housing construction, I think we should have looked at our parking minimum and do like, I see like now like a trend, like cities doing like parking reform. Big cities have done it, and small cities also have, cities like our size have done it, and cities like bigger than us have done the same thing. And I think this is, when we came, the requirement for parking, this is also will help developer like do more houses. I don't know, but counsel, really, it is time to think about that so we can, we can have more houses being built.
The Pro Housing Grant does it cover. We will be doing a hiring consultant to help us with parking reform.
Okay, that's great.
Yep. And there's some communities that are moving, not requiring any, they're not dictating how much parking. They allow the private market to decide. I think in Missoula, they were looking towards going that way, because they basically said parking is amenity. You pay more for on-site parking, and you just have naturally affordable housing if you don't have on-street parking. So they were thinking of it more as amenity. I don't know if we'll go that far, but we will have a consultant that takes us through those options.
Sure, yeah.
Well, thank you so much. Great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is not an easy topic, but seem like we have some champions amongst us to try to figure this out. So thanks to staff and all that you all do on the affordable housing front.
Yeah, I think we just need to remind ourselves every time, every day. I was trying to request that, like, maybe each city council meeting, we should highlight in the beginning, like, how many, to remind ourselves, like, how many people in the waiting list waiting for housing? How many homeless people we have? Like, keep just reminding of that, because I know everybody is passionate about this, but we are moving slowly. Like, many things will make us move slowly. I know that because we don't have a lot of fun. That's a big deal. But it's still like, reminding us constantly, we will do something.
I think, you know, because of the urgency that we feel of the housing need on so many fronts, we have individuals that lose, where the landlords are increasing the rents, housing is not being affordable anymore, they're trying to find new locations, it's hard to find it in Iowa City. We have the unhoused situation in our community as well. So Mayor Pro Tem, I do think that you bring up a point where this council has stated that we want to be more aggressive with our housing efforts. And I also believe that if we have the little reminder, it's just, I hear two things right now, and it could expand. But one would be, you know, how many individuals are unhoused in our community? And then the second that you just mentioned was...
I like the waiting list of, like, how many people are in the waiting list of the housing officer.
So that Housing Voucher, Housing Authority, just to give us some data, I would be supportive of that. The question is, do you want that in a, do you envision it being in a work session? Do you envision it just kind of being a part of our, a part of the packet where it can just be either updated and we can bring it up?
I guess one, like, when, normally when we have something public, you know, that's like really fire us and fires people. So I want, maybe the staff, like every meeting, can just report that in, like, when we ask you in the beginning or in the end, I don't care, anytime. Yes, like, this is a report about affordable housing. We have, like, maybe, because if we record it, like, we have 100 homeless people. Next time, if they said we have 120, that's will make us like, say, oh, what's going on here? We need to do something about this. But if they said, oh, it has become 80, we will be like, happy that's happening. So exciting, yeah.
And we'll ask why. That's great. Let's do more.
Yes, so, just like something like that to remind us all the time. We all, we busy, and sometime we forget this. And sometime we come here with a lot of issues going on we need to focus on. But if the staff can remind us that, it will be great. Or I can ask every meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what other counselors are thinking about, but I would suggest it being, it could either be quarterly, but even if it was, you know, every meeting, it can be on our work session, just where it is a, is information, and if there needs to be a comment, someone could make that comment.
I would go with that, just like the same thing we have, like, qualification of a GND, and we have, it can be just there, one line.
And maybe not to get this so crunched up, potentially it could be in an information packet where it just highlights, you know, 1010 IP5, you know, the update on affordable housing, where we don't have it all here. It's in the...
Bucket.
It's in the packet, but it just alerts us to, if someone wants to bring it up and shed light on it, it'll be there.
That sounds good to me.
What do people think? Thoughts?
I've noticed that staff has been putting building statistic reports in our IPs, and I've appreciated that. So thank you for including that, because that's, I think, the fundamental of all of our housing problems, is there's just not enough houses. So to see that included is good, and I read those, but I don't usually highlight them in our discussions of our IPs. But we can start drawing that out. But it sounds like you're wanting for other statistics too, maybe?
Yeah, I guess I'd want, I'd maybe ask for a little bit of time to think about this. I want to provide you something meaningful, but I also want to make sure it's credible. And when it comes time to like homeless, for homeless counts, I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure there's variability every, every two weeks to report out to you, and I don't want to put information out there that I can't substantiate. HUD requires a once-a-year point-in-time count. We also have nonprofit providers like DVIP and Shelterhouse that are providing homeless services. So I'm imagining just the difficulty in trying to update a figure that's reliable every two weeks. If affordable housing in general is your interest, we can, we can pepper you with all kinds of statistics and research and operational information that we could put into an IP that you could pull out and highlight. I just want to be very careful about trend data that I don't have a whole lot of confidence in right now. So if you could give me a little bit of time to think about it and maybe start to put something together, and once you see it in the IP, you can massage it and direct me to change it as we go, so it's a little more fluid. I think that might work out for the best.
Yeah, and I was going to ask too, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to ask too, because I was aware that we only do the, have like the count once or twice a year. the count once or twice a year, so of like, you know, what we, the homeless estimate. And I think most cities do something like that. Usually there's a, I usually watch for the article in the Gazette about the Cedar Rapids versus Iowa City, and that usually comes out about once a year or so.
I understand, and that's what we've been seeing, Sean and Jeff, but we want to be aggressive, so that's what we want to see. If, if you think you need just time, if you think like to, like, twice a month is too much, maybe it can be once a month for the homeless. But I think for the waiting list, for like wherever it's closed right now, even, that's easy to find out from the housing authority, how many people they bought this year, months, and how many people left, you know, still on the waiting list. That's easy, you can get that, but I understand that maybe it's burden on the organizations who are like recording this, the homeless people, it will be too much on that. What about once a month? Like, of course, of every organization will, will record there for their own record, how many people they have every month. They have that data ready, and if they can share it with us, will be great. We're going to understand that could not be the exact for now. Maybe there is somebody else homeless somewhere, and they never report themselves to any organizations, but this is, will give us like, kind of, something close to the, yeah, you can still think about it, yes, maybe you're going to find better way than what I'm saying, but...
Yeah, I just, I don't disagree with anything. I just want to make sure that it's meaningful and credible. If I can accomplish those two things, then, then I'm happy to do it. Every IP and, and I, and I agree, keeping it front and center will, will usually spur more action, so I will, we'll put something together, we'll get it in, and you'll have to just direct me if you're not completely happy with what we're providing you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item number six, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that currently, the Iowa City Book Festival is going, happening now, and will be continuing through the weekend. Tons of events, tons of authors. IowaCityOfLiterature.org has the full schedule of events and authors. You know, there are things going on now. It really hits its stride coming this weekend in locations around the city, including, of course, the Public Library, the University of Iowa Main Library, Prairie Lights Books. I think there might be, let's see, some other, some Ped, some stuff on the Ped Mall, Daydreams Comics, I'm just kind of looking through, Merge has some stuff. So just a lot of stuff going around, revolving around our UNESCO City of Literature. It's a huge event, and lots of cool things to see. I know there's a, I'm hoping to make it to some of the, the talks on Saturday. There's one with Ari Berman that I'm really, I saw him speak actually when he was here several years ago. I'm looking forward to see him speak again, if I can work it into my schedule. But yeah, just kind of a reminder to the public that that's, that's going on currently and through the weekend.
All right, you gave that a little early. This is for council updates on assigned boards.
I'm assigned to missions.
Oh, you are assigned to the board.
Yes, I'm assigned to the board.
All right, great. All right. Yes.
Similar then.
All right, get it in there.
Kelly will say this also at the end of the meeting, but we have a different audience for the work session. So tomorrow evening, this is relating to the Community Police Review Board, which I'm our liaison still, so tomorrow evening at the Iowa City Public Library, beginning at 5:30 PM in Meeting Room A, is one of their public forums. They have been soliciting questions from the public, but also will take, which they will intend to answer at the forum, but also they will take questions in real time. So 5:30 PM tomorrow at the library.
Great.
Tomorrow morning at 8:30 is Economic Development Committee meeting. You're all welcome to join us online.
No, no, they can't. Not all of them, less than a quorum.
Join us to watch.
All right.
You're welcome to join.
Yeah, you can't be tuned, you can't be like signed in. All right. I want to remind us that on the 22nd of October, 1 PM to 5 PM, we'll be back in this room for our council strategic plan, planning session. And again, that is on the 22nd, 1 PM to 5 PM.
And I just want to know that this is something that have to finish at 5 PM, right? Not like we can maybe go on?
I, I think, yeah, I, yeah, I think the, the 5 PM is a hard stop.
Okay, good, because I have another commitment at 6 o'clock in North Liberty.
Okay, yeah.
Do we have any homework between now and then, or is that something you talk about in your report at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, so what I've sent out prior would just, I'd appreciate if you just take a skim through the existing plan. And we had issued the annual update about a month ago in one of your September IPs. It's also available on the website. It's just icgov.org/strategicplan. So if you could read through that update in September and, and the plan, I think that would be helpful on, in this week's IP. So on Thursday, you'll have a memo from me that provides some of, some of my thoughts on the, the process and some suggested modifications to the plan. It's a short memo, won't take you too long to read, probably, just, it's a couple cover pages with the redline document, and I really, really tried to limit any redlining, trying to honor the intent of your plan, but maybe mostly trying to fine tune things. So budget a little bit of time for, with that memo, and we should be good to go.
Thank you.
All right, here in nothing else, we are adjourned.